Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take your call.
At Richardson Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Candace?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
I am also here. We have a floor.
Before we continue, there are two changes. Before we get started here, we have two changes to the agenda. We are going to be, under Section 7, there is going to be a 7A and a 7B, both for your discipline or reinstatement. We are changing 7A to be an open session, and we are adding 14E, which will be the approval of the board resolution. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have support? Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Walmsley, could you personnel?
Mr. Fields, under the weather tonight, so I'm going to read the personnel report. Bobby Joe Kraft, bus driver, transportation, resigning. She was hired by the board, I believe, at the last board meeting. She changed her mind. Ann Gallagher is resigning from a Schedule B position, district newsletter and social media coordinator at Lee Elementary School. Amanda Wareham is resigning as childcare. New hires, Justin Adish, culinary arts teacher. Ashley Sikowsky, three-year-old preschool teacher. Ashley Godorna, excuse me, forgive me if I pronounce it right, lunchroom supervisor and childcare aide. Matthew Harms, PM custodian. Kaylee Neff, special education teacher at Richmond Middle School. Mrs. O'Donnell, lunchroom supervisor at the middle school. Karen CJ, childcare, AM and PM. Tara Wickings, bus driver. Emily Williamson, childcare. Stacy Rollick, high school, special education teacher. And Amy Zieselman, second grade teacher at Will L. Leo Elementary School. Notice of appointments, these are already individuals who've been hired. Beth Klein, for the student staff health and wellness advisor at Lee Elementary School. Jessica Schleyhuber, for the student staff health and wellness advisor at the middle school. And Amanda Turpin, for the Green Club at the middle school. And there were no notes regarding the minutes from the last board.
Any discussion?
Could you give us a brief overview of what the health and wellness advisor is?
It was started last year, as you're saying, on the surface, but they really look at activities and events that will help build the staff and student wellness in each building. We started yoga with staff last year, if you recall, on Wednesdays with yoga, we offered that. That was part of that outcry. We have a survey going out to staff to see kind of whether their needs are, and then we take those results and that will build on what we do with staff this year, as well as students, to try to make sure that we are a little positive, excellent learning environment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item on our agenda will be an open session for a student discipline reinstatement hearing.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. It's a little difficult.
Don, do you want to come up and join the board?
Sure.
Can my family? Sorry, Abigail, come forward, please.
We're going to get some chairs for you.
Thank you.
I'm the board president normally, and what we always do is we go around and introduce ourselves, so we're going to, we'll go this way and we'll work our way around, okay?
Brian Walmsley, superintendent.
Angela Casillo, board member.
Dan Denofe, counsel for the district.
Sandy Fortuna, secretary.
Danielle Sutton, board member.
Margaret Teltel, board member.
Candace Cunningham, first back.
Kelly Ogami, trustee.
And I know we had Abigail, and I'm assuming you're the attorney?
I am.
The parents have given you the right to represent her?
Correct. Here at the board meeting.
Yeah, my name is Paul Gladys Smith-Evage. It's M-I-S-U-K-E-W-I-C-Z. I can give all my cards to Secretary Rubenisa.
I'll take it.
Okay, so how do we do our? I just need a confirmation from Mr. and Mrs. DeBlau that that's in agreement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, this is dealing with student information, and we can't release it without the parent's authorization.
Okay, so just to let you know, the board has not seen any documents at all at this point. So we're going to take about five minutes, whatever, we're going to read through all the documents, and then we're going to hear from our administration, and then we'll have an opportunity for you to speak and ask any questions at that point. And then we will ask, do they leave the room?
Delivering.
We will deliberate here, and you will hear what we decide. Okay? Pardon my. We will also be asking questions. It'll be kind of a back and forth thing. Okay?
Let's take a look.
Yep. Okay, at this time, the middle school administrators, please step up to the podium and give us your statement.
My name is Paul Knight. I'm the dean of students at the middle school. This is Jennifer Morella, who's the principal of the middle school, so I'm going to kind of leave this here. If you want to pull out your timeline that we typed out, that'll kind of give you a good basis of where we are going to start and end. Over Memorial Weekend, I believe it was on Saturday, which was the 27th of May, we did receive a phone call on that Saturday from Officer Davenport, who is our school resource officer, that a threat was made against a student via a YouTube channel while the student was on their livestream from a YouTube channel. Jennifer Morella was told by Officer Davenport that Student A's family filed a police report and mentioned Student B's name because they had fourth-hour science together. Student B had made fun of her in class. Then following that, we sent directory information on Student B to Officer Davenport. Ms. Morella spoke to Kathy Campo, who's the teacher here in the building, who reminded her of some students who were making fun of Student A's YouTube channel. Kathy Campo sent the following names via text message, Abigail DeBlau, Student E., Student E., Student F., and Student G. Jennifer Morella called Officer Davenport with more information. Kathy Campo informed me that she stopped four boys from making comments about Student A's YouTube channel, that they were watching in class, or watching well in class. She was not with them during this time. During that time, Student G asked what Student A's last name was, and she and Abigail DeBlau looked at her, or looked her up. I explained that I was out when I got home, sent Officer Davenport directory information To new addition, Jennifer Morella received an email from Heather Merrill, who was also a teacher in the building, showing a text she received at a Teams message, it was a Teams message, at 12:18. You can see it's attached, as we have that in the packet as well, from Student A. It was under the assumption that the information was shared with Richmond Police. Officer Davenport let P. Knight and Jay Morella know that Abigail DeBlau and Student H., not Student G. Jay Morella sent directory information on Student H. to Officer Davenport. At this time, it was decided that students stay home. On the Tuesday, pending further investigation, Kelly Davenport stated that the officers will let the families know. Kelly Davenport contacted Brian Walmsley. So essentially, we had the girls stay home, and this was on the day we returned from Memorial Jay Morella contacted Brian Walmsley to ask if a letter should be sent home to families regarding the incident. Brian Walmsley stated that the letter should be sent. Jay Morella sent to all three schools, you can see attached in your packet as well. On Tuesday, May 30th, Jay Morella received a text message from Brian Walmsley that Abigail DeBlau's parents were not informed that their daughter needed to stay home. Follow-up email to Abigail DeBlau's parent. Abigail DeBlau's parent called and spoke to Mr. Walmsley, Brian Walmsley, regarding the same thing. Kelly Davenport met with Jay Morella and P. Knight at the beginning of the school day. Jay Morella mentioned the information from Heather Merrill. This information was also stated that Student A's written statement, you can see attached as well, had not spoken, had not spoken in his statement. This information changes the situation as it mentions the schools, specifically Heather Merrill's fourth-hour class situation will be sent to the McComb County Prosecutor. Paul Knight put the information regarding this incident in Power School. 9:45, Jay Morella spoke to Brian Walmsley to provide updated information, determine how to proceed with Abigail DeBlau and Student H. Paul Knight called and left a message with Student H.'s mom, Student A.'s mom. Student A filled out her statement on the correct form with Kelly Davenport, Officer Davenport. Student A's original statement was taken on an incorrect form by the police officer Heather Merrill also filled out the statement with Richmond PD, you can see attached as well. 2:05, Paul Knight spoke to Abigail DeBlau's parent, Dad specifically, and let him know that we were still investigating, and for Abigail DeBlau to stay home tomorrow as well. Jay Morella left a message with Student H.'s parents, stating the same thing regarding Student H. Jay Morella spoke with Student H.'s parent, this is at 3 o'clock, spoke to Student H.'s parents, and let her know that we are still investigating, and for her to keep Student H. home tomorrow. This is May 31st, 8:00 a.m. Jay Morella and P. Knight met with Brian Walmsley, Renee Staples. A decision was made to suspend students for the remainder of the school year pending further investigation. A meeting will be set in August with parents to determine the outcome of the investigation. 10:30 a.m., Jay Morella and P. Knight spoke with the families of Abigail DeBlau and Student H. Abigail DeBlau and Student H. will be suspended through the end of the school year pending further investigation. Meeting will be scheduled in August to determine possible course of action, possible further course of action. August 18th, 2:30, email communication was sent to families of Abigail DeBlau and Student H., informing them that we were still waiting on further information from Richmond Police and McComb County Prosecutor on any potential charges. A meeting will be scheduled with families a week of August 21st, 2023. August 21st, it was set 12:30, Richmond Police informed us that Prosecutor's Office authorized charges against Abigail DeBlau and Student H. malicious use of telecommunications services. P. Knight called each parent to set up a meeting with Brian Walmsley, and that was, we had the last meeting on Wednesday, August 23rd.
Does the board have any questions for our administrators? What happened at the meeting on August 23rd, then?
The meeting on the August 23rd, I presented Mr. and Mrs. DeBlau with the packet that you have in front of you, with my recommendation for an expulsion for one semester. It's typically a meeting I meet with parents, and only in this process to go over what to expect in the process, ask them if they want it in closed session. At that time, they requested it in closed session, and we had a conversation, it's going to be closed session, about having a closed session, and the packet was given to them. They said I would be in the office throughout the weekend. I gave them, if they had my cell phone number, if they had any questions about what to expect tonight, they'd call.
So it happened in May, and we suspended to the end of the school year with us to investigate more thoroughly. Is that why we didn't have any kind of hearing at the end of June?
That is correct. Trying to figure out what, make sure all the details that we had were correct. The Richmond Police Department, this is kind of a unique situation, because most school events that we deal with were directly involved with the school. This is something that was brought to us, that carried over into the school, so we were waiting for the Richmond Police to have any more information, et cetera. And at that time, we hadn't, but on the 18th, the first, was when we received that they were moving forward, the prosecutor was moving forward with charges.
When was the 21st?
21st, sorry.
And forgive me, Mr. Knight, but these pages here that have like a blurred face and the little, I don't do YouTube, I don't, is this, is this the engaging back and forth of, and the name Jenny Casey, this is the fake name that the student used?
Yes.
That's what I'm looking at?
Yes.
What am I looking at, the faces? At this face?
The face is Student A's live YouTube feed.
This is the student that was threatened?
Correct.
That's who's face? Okay.
Those are the screenshots that were submitted to the average repeat.
Okay, thank you. And then, when we're talking, Ms. Morella, you spoke with Ms. Campo, that there were other students that quite possibly were doing similar things or about Student A's YouTube channel. Was Abigail, if I missed it when I'm reading, I apologize, but Abigail was involved in that? She was not. That was not. This was just Mrs. Campo saying, by the way, these are some other kids that this is.
Remember what I came to talk to you about?
About this going on?
An issue that we need to kind of keep an eye on.
Yes.
But no, Abigail was not involved in that issue.
Okay. Prior to any of this, prior to this happening, and I know you two haven't been at the middle school that long, but I was looking at Abigail's discipline, not really, not really a whole lot, so what, what would your take be? Was this something that, I'm surprised, oh, there was the incident in December of '22, you know, saying I went to kill you, but you know, sometimes we say that and we maybe don't really mean it, but any, would she ever been on your radar prior to this happening?
Not for something like this.
Okay. Not at all.
For me, I'd just like to add, when I met with the parents, I expressed that because of the nature, this is why it's coming to the board.
Yeah, oh, I get it. Yeah, yeah. And we checked all the devices, that there's nothing special ed-related with that account.
Correct.
Correct. Those were my questions, Mrs. DeBlau. Thank you. What date was the threat on? Was that a weekend? Because she never made it.
Yes.
Memorial Day weekend.
And did she ever return to school? It doesn't look like she never returned to school after that.
One question I had for Ms. Morella, sorry, I don't know if I need this or not, open session. When we talk about you speaking with Mrs. Campo, what made you call her, or what was your reasoning for calling her?
So what made me call her was several months or weeks prior to that, I don't remember the timeframe. Mrs. Campo approached me in my office and said that this student in question had a live YouTube channel, and that some of the students, the students that were mentioned as students, whatever letters they are, were, were making fun of her.
Okay.
And that student was not in class with them, but we wanted to make sure that there was nothing else going on, so Mrs. Campo just said, I think this is something we just need to keep an eye on, so if you hear of anything, and I will continue to monitor, and we did continue to monitor, we did regular check-ins with the other student, and at that time, really, there hadn't been anything else that had happened up until this incident.
So it was just, you were saying it was just like a familiar name that you had heard before because you had that conversation?
Yeah, so throughout the conversation that I had with Officer Davenport, it just reminded me that this other, the student in question who was threatened, her name was on my radar, and then I remembered that we had had that conversation.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So Abigail is your, and you can sit there, or if you want, go up to the podium.
Could I address the board real quick?
Absolutely.
Thank you. My client, officer, testified here proper. Good evening again, everyone. My name is Paul, and I'm the attorney, I have your family, your sister, and today's proceedings. Just by the way, a timeline, not a big deal, but this actually, the text thread began on May 26th, about 11:30 at night between my client, she was actually spending the night at another student's home that are the student, I'm not sure if you've listened to my student name, I'm not going to list her name in this forum, but she was spending the night at this other individual's home. That Friday evening, my client will offer testimony that her and this other student were on YouTube, just what kids do, searching, and at that point in time, a familiar name came up, and that was Student A's name, that apparently she had a YouTube livestream going at that point in time. My client will testify that she's had no beef with this other student, Student A, she's never had any problems with her before, up until a week before this incident, where Student A told my client that she should kill herself. She did not go on the internet at night looking for the student's YouTube livestream, which is something that popped up. So her and this other student, who's also suspended, we're going back and forth, at no point in time did my client ever create a fake name, because you'll see that the name that she has listed is Jeannie Casey. She'll tell you that she's had that name, and that's one of her screen names that she uses for many, many years, and that was in the advice of her parents, that essentially you don't put your own name out there on social media for everyone to see, so she created a couple of different names for them to be, this Jeannie Casey. But this was not done that night to go on and threaten and harass this other student. So it's just this screen name that she uses on occasion. Her and this other individual are watching this YouTube livestream put on by Student A, the victim in this case, and there's some dialogue going back and forth. My client will offer her testimony that there's probably nine other students or other people on that livestream, who don't know if they're students or not, and at some point in time, Student A, that being the victim on this, says, who is this Jeannie Casey that's making all these comments? Nothing derogatory at that point in time. My client responds, I'm in fourth hour with you in Ms. Morella's class. Now, these text messages that we see here are pretty difficult to read, I'll admit that, but my client's going to admit to you that some of these text messages she did send out. She has already sent out, I'm in Ms. Morella's fourth-hour class with you. The school was never mentioned by name, the student was never mentioned by name. There's some dialogue going back and forth, back and forth, and at that point in time, my client stupidly says, give me what I want. She sends that to Student A, that being the victim in this case. Having asked her why, she can't really come up with a good answer. As I said, you made no demands, I mean, after you said, give me what I want, never said anything. But we're talking about an individual who just began, she just turned 13, about a month before the incident, so I'd ask you to look at her youth, and we're talking about a very young individual. And then she'll also admit to you, even though there's nothing that we can really see in these text messages, at some point in time, she indeed did say, or else, to Student A. She said, she said, or else. What she's going to tell you, and what she told the Richmond Police Officers within 48 hours of them investigating this incident, when they brought her down to the police department with her father, showed her the text messages, said, well, what about these gun emojis? My client had no idea that there was ever a gun emoji sent. Now, you think to yourself, well, how could this be? I mean, you're going back and forth and sending your screen name. She told the Richmond Police Officers, and again, this happened under spur of the moment, within 48 hours of the incident, with her father sitting there, I didn't send those, all I can say is, we were going back and forth on my phone. The other student was expelled, must have sent the gun emojis. She'll tell you flat plank, point blank, that she never sent Wingo's gun emojis, that was the other student involved, and that's confirmed in the Richmond Police Department's police reports, which I have a copy of, that was my client's story within 48 hours of investigating this. And I have a copy of the police reports, I brought two copies with me, but you'll see that's what she told the police officers when she came down there within 48 hours, that I never sent these gun emojis. I did send the other ones, I'm in Ms. Morella's fourth-hour with you, or else, and she also said, see you Tuesday. So she's admitting that she sent out some things, which I think could be threatening, but I think but I think, I understand why we're all here, because these school districts and police departments have to be so hypersensitive to stuff like this. I get it. I mean, when we're talking about a gun emoji, whether it's a prank or not, this needs to be investigated. People need to be suspected. But my client is going to tell you today that she never sent the gun emoji. All she said was, "See you Tuesday, I'm in class with you, give me what I want." She never sent a gun emoji. In addition, it's my understanding, her testimony she's been offered today, not only did not change within 48 hours of being hauled up to the police department in an interview by Officer Davenport on a Sunday, she told administration the exact same thing, or at least her father did. At this meeting last week, she told the superintendent, her father told the superintendent, "My daughter never sent a gun emoji. She said some stupid things, but she never sent a gun emoji." And I hope that is your recollection of the conversation as well, from last week, when her father told you that. We're talking about, we're looking at the main terms of factors. We're talking about a student age. Here, my client just turned 13 a month before the incident, she was finishing her seventh grade. We look at a student's discipline and history. As mentioned, she has absolutely nothing. She's never been in trouble, in fact, she's not a student. Last year, she received three economic awards, which had copies on it. She's on the cheer, both sideline and competitive. She played on the basketball team. She also volunteers on the green team doing recycling. And in her spare time, she rides horses, she competes in equestrian. Looking at some of the other factors, whether or not she has a disability, she has none, she's on no prescribed medication, no mental health issues, no psychological issues. Like I said, her and this other girl involved have absolutely no history together. She was not going on there to start a meeting with this other young lady that was involved. The seriousness of the behavior, like I said, schools are, should be so hypersensitive to this type of thing. We can't take these threats not serious enough. I understand that, my client understands it. But again, she will tell you that she never at any point in time sent out the most serious threat that was done by the other student, that being the gun emoji. Another thing I would like to direct my attention to, the seriousness of the behavior, I get it, these are serious, they should be investigated. But again, this occurred outside of school, this was made off campus, wasn't directed at a teacher or staff member, was investigated within 48 hours by the Richmond Police Department, deemed not credible or true. And they did bring a juvenile petition against her for misdemeanor offenses for harassing a telecommunications device. In addition, the letter that was sent out, I believe, following Tuesday, because again, this was more like a weekend, from school administration, it even notifies the parents. And I'll quote it verbatim. Administration found that the behavior posed, never posed a safety risk to students. Schools never locked down, schools never shut down, kids came back to school following Tuesday without interruption. School Board itself, having this investigation and talking to Richmond PD, deemed that the threat that was made by my client or others was deemed not to be credible. Now, when you're looking at the Richmond Police Reports, the other girl that's suspended right now wasn't even on the Richmond Police Department's radar. Her name came up during the interview when my client told the officer, "Here's who I was with, here's who I sent that direct, who I sent that message to." Now, obviously, if you're looking at the Richmond Police Department, when they're interviewing that other student, of course she denies it. Of course she does. And I guess that's something for the courts to figure out. But suffice it to say, my client will offer truthful testimony to you today that she never sent out a gun emoji, she never made that most serious threat to this other student. So we're talking about some of this more, some of the other subtle factors, whether the behavior posed a safety risk. This is right from the parent teacher code of conduct. Again, both Richmond PD and Richmond Administration found that the behavior that my client was engaged in never posed a safety threat. We look at whether restorative practices are a better option. What I'm proposing at this point in time, that my client get a full mental health assessment evaluation, we can present that to the board. Once that's completed, it's going to take about a week or two. I hope I can get it into the school year. But unfortunately, they just retained my services on Saturday, so I was able to get that done. But again, what I'm proposing is that my client get a full mental health assessment evaluation performed by a licensed counselor, to show that she's not homicidal, that she's not suicidal, and that it's just a stupid prank that went bad. And whether lesser interventions would address the issue. Again, we're talking about the most serious, serious thing that we can talk about, this expulsion. My client's already missed the last two, weeks of last school year. She was suspended pretty much from, let's see, it would have been May 30th to the end of the school year, which according to my records indicated June 13th. She's had the juvenile court intervention, she's going to be going forward regardless of that matter in the upcoming future. Her life has basically been turned upside down by all this. She is taking the management's judgment seriously. She had to spend the entire summer wondering what's going to happen, and she just found out last week that they recommended a full expulsion for the first half year of the school year. And again, I'd like to point out in regards to the board's objective, the board's objective, according to the Richmond Community School Board's policy, are to minimize out of school suspensions and expulsions. That's not being done in this case. They recommend the harshest penalty that they can impose at any school. What I would convey to you is that my client, given her age, given her lack of any disciplinary history, given her excellent academic record, given her extra curricular activities, that she's already had punishment enough. She was suspended for the last two weeks of school, she's looking forward to coming back to school. She has two brothers and sisters that are about to begin 10th grade and 12th grade at Richmond High School. She's looking back to go into school. In addition to the mental health evaluation assessment, which I'm sure that should get done in the near future, within a week or two, I would ask my client, and I think it would be a good idea, that she apologize to Student A, write her something. Obviously, this shook up this, this young lady. And I think that my client, regardless of whether or not she said the most damning threat, I think that she should still write a letter of apology to this other student. And that's restorative or restorative practices at its best. And again, my, my client is ready to answer any questions you have. I'm ready to answer your questions, you might have it myself as well.
Does anybody on board at this point have any questions for attorney?
I have questions, but I'm not sure that they're for him.
Okay.
I don't know if she wants to say something first, or?
Yeah, we're going to, Abigail, are you okay? You want to come up and speak to the board?
Well, I kind of assist in asking some questions. First of all, Abigail, do you understand that you have a criminal petition filed against you for misdemeanor offense, in the whole kind of juvenile court?
Correct.
And you understand that nobody can really force or force your, compel you to testify on her behalf today, correct? Second, you mentioned criminal proceedings, but you still want to tell the board your side of the story, is that correct? Okay. May 26th, you're over at another student's house, correct?
Correct.
You go onto the social media account, correct?
Correct.
And tell the board how it is that you came to find what they refer to as Student A, that being the victim, the one that was suspended.
So we went on a YouTube channel, we're just on YouTube scrolling, and then we came across the person that we were on, and we just pressed on it, and we started off just watching it, like just watching live. So that's how we came across.
And how many other people were on this livestream?
There were about nine people.
Okay. And you admit to the board that you in fact did send out some correspondence on YouTube Live, correct?
Yes.
And tell the board what you recall that you sent out to the victim.
I sent out not some, not some good name that sent out to her. I sent out "or else," "see you fourth hour," and then "see you Tuesday."
Can I just stop for a second? So are we not going to be able to ask her any questions? You're just going to ask them?
No, I am happy to.
Because usually, and just something she just said made me, made a question come to my head, so I just want to make sure, I don't want to interfere. I know she's your client, and I appreciate and understand what you just said, but usually we're asking questions, so I just need a no from you. And you can always say, "No, she can't answer," correct? I mean, that's?
I don't think I'm going to do that.
No, but you can.
Yes.
Because you're her attorney.
Correct. Go ahead.
Okay. So just, Abigail, right there, what you just said, you said, you said the "or else," "give me what I want," "see you Tuesday." Just tell me, I've never seen you before, okay? And so you're in front of me for something that I consider to be pretty serious. Just, why would you do that? Separate the, if you're saying you didn't do the, the gun emojis, why would you do that? Do you think that was threatening?
I did think it was threatening at the time. I really don't remember why I would say, "See," I don't know why I would say "or else" or, well, I meant "or else" in the fact of, I would go to the school about what she said to herself. I never said that in chat, that I told her that she said that to me, but that's why I said "or else." And then she asked who we were, so I said, "Fourth hour, Ms. Morella's class." So I kind of tell her that we're in your fourth hour, Ms. Morella's class.
So you did know who she was when you were, when you were saying those things to her, and you did it because she made the comment to you about you should kill yourself?
Correct.
So that was, what you did was your way to get back at her. And you can say, "No," if it wasn't, but this is, this is what I'm here.
Okay.
And, and if I were that other student, and I then made fun of, whatever the situation, you don't think that that is threatening or inappropriate, or why in the world would you do it?
At the time, I didn't think it was threatening.
So what was the point of doing it? To let her know you were going to tell on her for what she said to you?
Yes.
If she didn't give you what you wanted?
I didn't know what I wanted.
Okay.
At that time, I had no idea what I wanted.
And obviously, she didn't know what you want either, but it made her afraid. Abigail, real quick, so you're, you're there, wherever you were sitting, and you said, you said you were on your phone.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so were you passing your phone back and forth?
She was on her phone, and she was, she got to my phone, she was looking at the live, so we were kind of going back and forth on each other's phones.
Because you were stating that you did not put the guns on. I just want to know how that happened. Because it is your, you know, your name, you know, what, you know, were you just sitting there? Did you pass your phone across? Or were you on hers? Why would you switch phones? Because you're on a live feed? I guess that's what's the question I have.
We were just switching. I don't know why we were just switching. We were just switching phones back and forth. And she was asking my phones, we switched phones, and then she, I wasn't, I didn't know she'd send that, I was just sitting there because she had my phone.
And you didn't see it when you got your phone back to you and you started going through with?
Well, because on the live, there's like nine people, so it just went away.
Got it, that's right.
About time I got out there.
Yeah, okay, thank you for reminding me. Okay, thank you.
So I did, I did, I don't know if the question I asked, after reading this police report that you provided, this, this other student that you're with also denies doing any of it. So, I mean, kind of puts us in a bit of a predicament. When it's your, you're admitting that this is your, that this is an alias that you use, and that is all under your alias, the gun emoji, everything.
And I'm not sure, sir, you said it, but I wrote down, didn't go looking for her, didn't go looking for this student. Then how'd you get to her?
So on YouTube, there's lives, and we were on other people's lives, and you can scroll, and there's different lives that pop up. So we were scrolling on different lives, and then hers popped up on live.
Okay, all right. Like I said, I don't do it, so I don't, so thank you for that answer. And then I guess, I don't know if the question is here, but when you made the statement that our administration, you said something about school board. The school board never made any decision about the threat being credible, so I just want to make that clear. That's, we had nothing to do, and you made that statement. But when you said that our administration said that the threat was incredible, I guess how I look at Mrs. Morella's letter was that it wasn't, the credibility came about because we found out who the students were, we spoke to the teachers, we took care of, so we didn't have to worry that come Tuesday, something was going to happen. So I don't, I don't look at that as that it was an incredible thing that happened. I don't take that letter that way, just letting you know.
Okay. Just in regards to that, that one issue, the reason why I stated that I don't believe that the Richmond Police Department deemed this incredible, and this is all confirmed the same, had the officer with every force decided there might be something to this, they could have got a search warrant over right then, went over to my client's house. They never did that, after they were with my client, with her father. It's my reading in those police reports that they deemed this a secret prank on that. I mean, they could have done a lot more than this.
Right, but you do refer to our letter that Mrs. Morella sent out to the parents, that it was incredible. That's just where I'm coming from. Whatever, the police, that is their job, and it's, it's different how they look at than how we do. That's only the point I was trying to make. The board never made that decision, and to say that it was incredible, I think we're coming from the point that because we had things figured out. So to let parents, because of how social media goes, and the craziness that somebody threatens some students, and if we don't let our parents know all of that, so I think that's where our letter's coming from, rather than saying that because of our school district didn't think it was credible, I don't think we should.
No, and again, I'm just reading the letter from May 29th by the principal, Ms. Jennifer Morella, and at this time, there's no recognition of closing school, and the students seeing the threat will not be at school on Tuesday. That's where I'm getting that version from. Essentially, this was a Friday, it was reported, the police did their job, and after determining that there was no credible threat, which was my client based on the lack of response on which police did, and when I say lack of response, I'm talking about going over, turning over her house upside down, turning over, interviewing this other individual, at that point in time, they determined that was safe to come back to school on Tuesday.
Abigail, how long was it between when this student A allegedly says this, tells you to go kill yourself, to you and your friend on the YouTube channel? How long of that time?
It wasn't on YouTube channel, she said that to me in person.
No, I, I understand that, I'm sorry. But how long was it between her saying that to you in person until this happened on YouTube?
Like about a week.
A week? Okay. So then, when you're on there, using an alias, she doesn't even know who, I'm assuming it's she, I guess, she or he, doesn't even know who, who, who you are, but you're, you're saying that you're, you're saying these things to her because, I don't know, you didn't really give us a reason, I guess. So I'm just, I'm a little confused, because like, because she did that to you, you're trying to get back at her? By, by what? Like what was your end game? By scaring her, by, you know, because she didn't even know who you were?
I don't think it was scaring her, I think we just, I think we were just going on there kind of, I guess, to get back, to say some mean names to her.
Okay. So it started off with you saying mean, because it is hard to read this here, started off with you guys saying mean names, calling her mean names, and then just escalated to this, is what you're saying? Okay.
And then when you, you spoke, sir, that Abigail had no beef, I think was what you said with the other student. Do you really, do you, do you think that you didn't have a beef with that student?
Not until, I guess, when that happened that night. We didn't talk, it wasn't like we were like mean to each other in that way, so I didn't think this.
Okay, what I'm saying?
But she told you to go kill yourself a week before that, so obviously you guys have some history.
I mean, we do, but I didn't take that very, very personally, because, I mean, it didn't really matter to me, so.
Well, if it didn't really matter to you?
Yeah.
To make this threat.
It seems like it mattered to you, or we wouldn't be here right now, correct? So you feel, and you're, I'm just asking, you feel it was, the girl, was she using an alias? Or the friend, was she using an alias? Or did you know, everybody knew, was she using her, a non-alias? Like you knew going in there for sure? Or was it just because you recognized her?
Just because we recognized her, everybody knew her live.
So you were all kind of using aliases, or within the chat? Or were there, you all just didn't know each other? You all thought everybody was anonymous, or?
I didn't know anyone else in the chat except me and my friend, so.
Okay. Do we want to?
Did you report the previous incident of her telling you to go kill yourself?
No.
Did you tell your parents? Did you?
No.
Do you want to kind of?
Who's it witnessed by anyone else? This didn't happen on social media, correct? This is actually at the school?
Correct.
And was this witnessed by anyone else?
Yes, my friend.
Okay, but you never reported it?
No.
We kind of interrupted, so did you need to continue asking her questions, or?
Just a couple of follow-up things. Some questions were asked in regards to your friend that you're spending the night with. Do you happen to know, was she also using an alias? I mean, it didn't say her name on it, correct?
Yeah, but yes.
And you say you didn't recognize anyone else's name on there? Except for Student A, that being the one who started the livestream?
Correct.
Okay, but everyone else had different aliases, you didn't recognize anyone else's, correct? And again, when you started this alias, and I think it was Jenny Casey, how long ago was it that you started up this alias and used it on social media?
About like three months after this happened, three or four.
And you don't have any social media accounts by Abigail the Blue, do you?
I might have one, it was collecting traffic.
Okay. Okay, well, typically on social media such as YouTube Live, you go onto one of your, I'll refer to them as an alias. Okay. And the reason why you created alias names is why?
Um, because my parents didn't want me using my own name for people to know.
Does the board have any other questions for Abigail? Okay, Abigail, we're gonna sit here and chit chat. Thank you for your time, thank you for coming.
So the recommendation is, what is our bylaw?
The recommendation is a semester expulsion. Just a reminder, anything over sixty days, by definition, is considered an expulsion. Oftentimes, when we went to school, expulsion might permanent one hundred eighty. Uh, state law has changed that several years ago. Um, one semester is approximately eighty, uh, or seventy-nine days, or eighty days is, which would be the recommendation.
Is that, like, just a standard recommendation that you came up with based on that, that's the violation in the code book? Or is that something that discussing with the principal and assistant principal you came up with this semester?
In, in prior recommendations that I've made to this board, they've been full year, rest of the year. Given the nature of the threat, it called for it to come to board. And then looking at the history, there's not a lot. And I shared that with, um, the DeBlau's, that basically, most kids that I see coming to the board hearings usually have several pages of discipline issues or repeated. Um, she doesn't have that. So that was a lighter, um, recommendation than normal. But any type of threat, I've always brought to the board, will finish the investigation.
So in our bylaws, there's not a clear language of saying no long?
No. It's, it's, you, you as a board, and I had shared this with the parents, you can go from, basically, time served. Uh, she starts on day one. You could do some type of, you could go more than this. Um, and then you can do something in between as a board, based on the severity and what you've heard in the presentation from the administration, as well as the student and the attorney in this case.
One other thing, just because she took the time to write a letter on my client's behalf, I do remiss if I didn't, uh, give this short letter from her cheer coach that she addressed the board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to remind the board, when I meet with the parents, I ask, often ask who they're bringing. Um, I talk to them about bringing character witnesses. Sometimes you have pastors, coaches, et cetera. And so this is a result of that.
So I have a question, I guess, going back to Abby, who I just asked. Okay, it just reminded me when you mentioned that. So Abby, in your discipline record, talking about the hit, that there's barely any history, there is a one history from December that you had shouted in frustration, "I'm going to kill you." Was this directed at the same student, or a different student, or just a?
No, it was me and my friend, we're kinda like just laughing about it. And it was meant in like a joking, not a serious way.
Okay.
Anyone wanna make a recommendation?
Well, I don't know if we all wanna read that first, or not.
Yeah, I'd like to, everybody able to look at everything first.
Outside of, like, the school discipline issue, I do think it's a great idea, as the attorney mentioned, to have some type of evaluation done, you know, in some form or fashion, uh, when she would come back. Doesn't matter if it's next week or in January, but some type of evaluation to put in the requirements.
Continue counseling or some kind of counseling. If we were to look at bringing them back early or either, I'd like to see that happen.
Have we kept her out all semester? What, what education will we offer her? Virtual, online? What are the options?
Um, I can only speak from past what we've done. We've offered some students virtual. Um, Mrs. Morella, Mr. Marion, I did talk about that option. Um, there was some concern in our discussion regarding this didn't result in a virtual setting, which got us here, so we were a little hesitant on that. But it's an option. Um, oftentimes, we've given parents who've been expelled for any number of time, a list of other online virtual options. Um, I do know it was discussed with the parents at that meeting, options if they wanted to, um, enroll in their home district. And again, those are just conversations, options, talking and processing this. Nothing was decided. Um, as I said to the parents, it's also the board decision. But you could enroll or virtually enrichment. We would work with, usually it's crafted in the resolution that we develop an educational plan for the student. Uh, just because the administration, I kind of, okay, what are the parameters for this virtual plan? If that's the way the board wants it.
So just, so your, your recommendation is for the semester?
Correct.
But normally, if, uh, uh, I guess, a threat this severe, it's usually the entire year?
Correct. And, and as I looked at the situation, looked at the history, looked at the age, um, the semester was my recommendation.
I mean, I'm just.
It's not easy.
Just, just, and just being transparent here. Um, I'm not sure, I, I prefer, I think, the rest of the year. I don't know what everybody else feels like, but that would be my, if I was doing, you know, if I was to make the motion, that's what it would be for. Um, and, you know, quite frankly, I'm not sure she's being completely honest here. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that's not answered. And, you know, I feel like, even if she is completely being honest, and even if it was just a bad decision, like, we're responsible for all the rest of these students here. And it's just serious, and, um, so I don't know. That would be my recommendation, I guess, so.
Well, and I guess I'm, I'm a little troubled, too, that, that the recommendation wasn't for an entire school year for those similar reasons. And it is hard, Abby, because you're, you're coming in, and like I said, I don't know you, and I'm just getting what's being presented to me. And then I look at some things, and it, it's hard for me to think, um, I know you'll find it strange, but I was thirteen once. And I just find it hard to believe that you didn't have a beef with her. And that this, what I'm looking at here, there's her face, you know? Um, because I asked the question, who, who this was, right? So there's her face. So I think, I think you were threatening towards her. And whether you truly meant it or not, I don't know you well enough to know that. But, but I believe that you did set out, and you made a really bad mistake. That's my feeling. And so I struggle that it's just for a semester. Um, and, and we have a student that doesn't have a history. And yes, you're right, we do have kids that come before us that do. But it gets, it's that whole, that whole thing of what our job is to make everybody safe. And sometimes, really good kids don't do really dumb things. But there's still accountability for it. And unfortunately, I mean, it sounds like maybe there's gonna be some accountability outside of the school, um, but I.
But we're responsible for the students here in this building, right?
And, and I think it did pose a threat. And whether our letter from Miss Morella, what it said to the parents, it, it did pose a threat because of the things that you said, you talked about, Mrs. Morella's class, you talked about, the hour, all of that stuff. Anybody else on that thread could take something and maybe go in a direction with what, and you were the catalyst for that. Do you know what catalyst means? You're the one that started it. So I, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but I, I have a problem that it's just a semester, but.
I, I have struggled with the whole, the emoji, you didn't do the emoji. It was from your phone, it was from your account. There has to be, I would've liked to see you take accountability for it regardless, because it did come from you, and just own it, maybe? Even if, because the other person's saying they didn't do it either. So to, to be the, you know, own it and apologize, move on, say you're sorry. It was, you know, it was emotional. Um, you were in an emotional place. And sometimes, we can do lots of things, and you shouldn't have to be the price broker for that. Um, but to move on, acknowledge it, accept it, um, and then move on. And we all grow, you know? We're all at, there at some point in our lives, so I would've liked to have seen that.
Well, according to the police's report, they are saying they consider it a threat, a valid threat, correct? That's why they are charging her with a misdemeanor, correct? So I feel it would be negligent for us as a district to not feel the same. Um, I definitely do feel counseling is definitely needed. Um, and if you do, and when you do, come back to Richmond, because this isn't gonna be the end. No matter what happens here, you'll always be welcome back. But we do have to make a judgment here to make sure everybody's safe. In the end, I, I'm still, I'm probably leaning more towards with what Board Member Fortuna said. I, I feel this is a serious threat, and for us to not take it serious and do what we would normally do, I, I'm concerned with that. Uh, especially looking at, while I know her record, there isn't many discipline things there. There are quite a few absences, and while they are excused, some are not. Uh, maybe there's more to the issue that we don't know, and that is there. And that maybe you could benefit from some time off of school and getting some counseling, and concentrating on yourself and what you need. Then maybe you won't be distracted. And maybe you would, if at that time, opened up to somebody and said, "She sent this to me." You know, that's where, that's where you should've, you know, that, this could've all been avoided, maybe. You know, it's important in the future, maybe, to make sure you speak out if you're feeling somebody, you know, is, is attacking you, or you're being a victim, too. And then we wouldn't be here.
Just one thing in regards to the absence of last year. Abby broke her fever, she fell off a horse, and so she was out doing virtual for home. She was out for about two months last year, um, with her fever.
Sure, sure. Well, there's more from, I think, right before the incident here, saying she's coming early from sick, from school.
Yeah, that's actually what I'm looking at.
And there was quite a few calls to home and getting picked up early from school. I don't know if there were issues maybe arising within the school or during that time with you personally. Maybe you were struggling at school then. So that concerns me. That there seem to be issues already going on, and I'm pretty sure our administrators, I'm not sure if they were here at those times, our current administrators. However, um, I would've definitely liked to have looked into this, you know, as a district, maybe, you know? Or as parents, if she's continuously calling to come home, or, I don't know. Do our, uh, if the administrators at the middle school agree with your recommendation?
Yeah, when we talk to you, that's consensus among the.
What did you add in here?
The administrators agree with the recommendation, and that we, in our conversation, that was our recommendation.
Well, wouldn't that be why we got that from you?
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what you. So I'm hearing a couple things here. I'm hearing the possibility of, instead of a half a year of the recommendation, we put her out for a full year. I haven't heard from everybody. I'm, in how many weeks did, was it how many weeks from last year?
It was almost two. It was from.
The thirty-first or something like that.
So, I might have to like, I think it was eleven school days, but it was about, um, fifteen actual days, with the holidays.
Abby, just eleven with the semester would be, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Question for you, how do you get to school in the morning?
My sister, my older sister, who's at the high school, drives me.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why so many tardies. Like, seven forty-six, that's not terribly late, but it's late. But how is, is that, you know, a bus or a parent? We can't fault Abby for her ride, you know?
Sure.
I can't fault my thirteen-year-old because I'm running late or I overslept, that's not.
Her fault, you know, but I'd look at her there, so. I was looking at that same thing, that there's actually, I think there's more going on. Um, really, because there are some abs, uh, tardies in the middle of the school day when you were there, otherwise, um, unverified absences, which isn't, isn't you necessarily. Um, because I guess as parents, it's our job to be the ones calling our kids in as long as they know that you're not there. But even the Thursday right before everything happened, you had an absence from school that day. Um, you know, there is a lot of other stuff going on here. So in my eyes, there's, there's more. Just looking at the record of tardies and absences, what's this saying here? Fifteen tardies, and thirty-four unverified absences. I feel like there's more going on. Um, you understand how terrible of a mistake you made?
You know, I just wanna, I do wanna say, you know, regardless of what happens here today, I mean, you seem like a nice enough girl. Um, this isn't the end for you, you know? Um, this is a lesson, right? And, uh, just, just treat it that way. And I hope that you, um, I do hope you get some counseling, because I do think that what this person said to you hurt you more than you wanna admit. Um, and rightfully so. And I hope that you get what you need, and you, you know, and I hope we see you again next year. I really do. Um, this doesn't mean that you're a bad person. You did a bad thing, you know, and, um, you made a, a bad choice. But that's all it was, just a bad choice.
But at what point do we have to respect those that are in the building? That the principal, assistant principal, Mr. Walmsley had that discussion, and that was their recommendation? We could have our opinion, kinda like this morning.
I wasn't thinking that.
Um, we can have our opinion, but they're also professionals, and they've done this. There's not their first rodeo as a principal or assistant principal, so they have the experience to make a sound decision as well. No, they know just as well that they have hundreds and thousands of students to protect as well.
Good point, I agree with that. I'm, they haven't, our administrators haven't been around for a couple of years to get to know her as well either. So that kind of, I guess, weighs on me a little. But yes.
And people do switch overnight, too. I've seen it, you know? So just because somebody's perfect and, you know, in a bubble, they can, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I just, it's not going against the administration or anything like that. I hope that that's not how they feel. Uh, which is, this is, this is a serious threat. And in the past, this is not how we reacted to it, that's all.
I would just clarify, oftentimes in the past, there's been more direct threats. And I'm not minimizing this threat to this student, please don't take that. But given what we had when we were dealing with it at the time, it was different than what we've dealt with in the past. And so when we sat down as a team to look through this, my first response was, okay, this is an audit going to the board, one hundred and eighty day, or a full year, school year recommendation. Again, we talked through it, and before we met with the parents, this was our recommendation. Knowing full well, but, and as I said to the parent, the board could say, come back, and the board could say, it's the full year. And that's your, that's your prerogative as a board. And that's your, that's your prerogative as a board. But the nod negotiation was, this was something that had to come to the board level from a threat perspective.
Just, um. Just one quick thing I'd like to bring your attention and this is a document that probably shows the light on this as well, but the United States Supreme Court just made a decision in regards to threatening behavior. This was decided by the United States Supreme Court approximately two months ago in the name of the case in Palmdale, Wisconsin, Colorado. The reason why that case is important, this actually came from the predecessor attorney, the third law group. This is directly from their website and essentially boards must be, they have to take an approach to these and determine whether or not this is a true threat or whether it's just something that was said and what we're now looking at directed by the United States Supreme Court. And I'm not saying I even agree with the United States Supreme Court's decision, but I'm just saying this is the law in the land. We're supposed to look now and whether or not the threat that was conveyed, whether or not it was a true threat or whether or not it was just something stupid. And what we're supposed to look at, the student intent for the speech to reach the school community. In this case, I would say that's not the case or my client didn't intend to reach the school community. Does the student intend to harm the school community? I don't think that there's any evidence that she intended.
Are we able to, like, I don't know if you just want to read that off or not.
I can give it.
No, I don't, I don't need, you can continue to read it, but I disagree with the way you're reading it, I guess. And I mean, I'm not an attorney and I'm not trying to be, but.
And I'm not trying to say.
And I guess I'm asking, this is out of, out of our realm of how we do it. We're discussed, we're, we're like the jury that's deciding and then we have the attorney jumping in. That's not how our process is. So I guess we have to, we have to look at, how are we running this?
We also have never done it in the process either. So I think there's some things that are different.
I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
But I'm just saying there could be other arguments the other side. She, I mean, if, if we feel that her threat was serious enough and most certainly would have reached the school and most certainly, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, that's how I would look at that.
I understand and I'm not trying to be biased. I mean, I have my clients. This is coming right from the predecessor attorney's website. If you want to take a look at this, I'd be happy to share it with you. It's reconsidering true threats, what was the intent? It deals directly with what we're dealing with today.
Yes, but what you added into that was that you don't think her intent was A, B, and C. I do. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, it could have been.
I get it.
Right. I think it is hard as a board.
Yeah, certainly.
Because we've never seen.
I don't know.
Her before.
Exactly.
And so you are making a decision based on what's presented in front of you and what is in the best interest of all of our students.
And I, yeah, I have to look at myself in the mirror and know that I did what I think kept everybody safe.
I, so what I would like to do is just make a recommendation, we follow the recommendation of our superintendent and then add additional things like we have done in the past. But that's mine. We want to go another route or if there's not enough, that's what I recommend.
If we're giving stipulations, I would be comfortable with doing the semester at January just from my personal experience over the summer with mental health and counseling and that type of thing. Having September through December to establish a relationship with a mental health professional and digging through that or unpacking that type of stuff is a huge chunk of time of progress. And that, if, if we're not going to put stipulations, and I feel like it needs to be 180 days, but if we're going to put stipulations where, because like, like Kelly was saying, there's seems to be other things that were leading up to this. And my kiddo would do the same thing. I'm not going to admit that it's bugging me because I just want to look, you know, tough because that's just the personality, but.
But we've done, we've done 180 days or whatever plus stipulations. So it's not one or the other.
No.
I mean, it can be both.
Sure.
Just, I mean, just so we're clear, I guess. It doesn't have to be just a semester with stipulations or the 180 days. It could be the 180 days with stipulations.
Anybody else want to make a, a different proposal?
Wait, did you make a motion?
No, I didn't make a motion. I'm proposing.
Nobody's making a motion. Don't make a motion.
Till.
Yeah.
I'm just proposing at this point.
I feel like in the past, there have been other situations, and of course, I wasn't on the board at that time, but I am aware of the situations where there wasn't a 180-day expulsion for a threat against a student with the police involved.
A threat, like a license?
Yes. I mean, I don't, I don't know which one to be talking about, so I feel, I don't know.
I, I would agree. I like the idea of, nobody's saying, I like the idea of the semester in January. I love the attorney's idea of having an evaluation done. Again, from my experience this summer, I love the idea of counseling. Whether you think you need it or not, I've had enough experiences this summer to know that you probably, everybody in this room probably does, period, just in general, to check in, even if it's once a month, you know, just to have somebody to vent to. So I think that would be a great starting point. I don't think that we can stipulate how often, or I don't think we should stipulate how often she would visit, because that's a, that's a decision that's made between the therapist and the client.
Sure. I think what we just do are, what's the words we use? Our credible, um.
Who cares?
What's the term? Credible, um.
Credible evidence by an appropriate license.
Thank you. Thank you. I knew, I knew that was the language that we always use and so in order to return, that, that has to come for reinstatement here, that proof of that.
Correct.
We've done that many times.
I listened to what the board is, is an option to consider too. If you have want to do the full year with a mid-year, could come back earlier if the cred, if certain stipulations are met.
I think that's a piece for the whole. That, that doesn't do anything for me. It's either, we're either going to do the whole year or that.
Well, because that's kind of what the check-in is, right? She doesn't complete it when we come in after the semester. We wouldn't be in state or anything.
Well, no, if I'm going to put her out for the year, but I'm going to say, but if halfway through you do this and this, then let's just put her out for half the year with the accommodations to come back.
And if it, if she doesn't do it, then she doesn't come back.
Correct.
I also like the piece that we've done in the past of, if some of us want it to be 180 days and some of us want it as a semester, what about the second half of the school year like we've done in the past of just like, not that she, you know, she's saying that it wasn't any, any credibility, but having like random checks, like we've done in the past, you know, like, hey, you know, stop by the office this morning and we're going to check your backpack or check your locker or both or whatever.
Or check in.
Just gives you a piece of time for the remainder of the school year.
Counselor, that, we've done that kind of, we've done that as well.
Where they have to check in with the counselor. You know, in the building.
And there should be some restorative maybe going on.
Yep.
Student, school members.
Well, that like they suggested to an apology, maybe a sit-down between the two.
Yes.
You know, are there really some issues we need to dig work out?
I'm just going to throw this out there, just before the mental health evaluation is followed without any recommendations, and I'm not sure if that's where you're going. She'd be the mental health evaluator. She'd be expected to follow through with all that counseling recommendations, whether it's, you know, counseling every week or whatever situation, it's all through all recommendations by the counselor.
But what if the recommendation is nothing?
She hasn't been assessed yet.
Yeah, no, we're, and we would still need. We're not saying weekly all that. What, what we do is there's a part of our resolution for if we put you out for a semester. When you come back, there's always a reinstatement if we put.
Conditions.
Conditions on it. So it would be some kind of counseling and that's when I asked Mr. Walmsley, the credible, just proving that yes, she has been in attendance and she's not a danger to others or hurt, something, not that, not every week. That's, that's nothing that we, that we look at, just we want this before she can come back.
Like Sandy said, though, what if she goes through this and she doesn't, the counselor doesn't say we need any counseling, an additional counseling? She goes through the elevation.
But those could be two separate stipulations. One is the elevation.
So we made it two.
Because she's not going to be a threat to herself or to the school or to students.
Okay, got it.
So there's still need to assess.
I'm saying that's another bullet point.
Is that like through our care?
A separate bullet point.
Through our care program? That she have built these social practices?
Whatever programs the parents want to send their child.
I mean, we can offer that, but that's, they're prerogated.
Right.
Okay, so go on back. Let's decide here, are we going to stick with the recommendation of just the first semester? Are we in agreement?
I'm not in agreement with that.
I'm good with that. First semester.
Okay, so we have enough to, to pass that. So we're going to stick with the recommendation. Okay, we have our document we need to fill out here.
Just so you know, the document is, is kind of a template so that it's the resolution that the board will actually approve, that as I mentioned, the parents that I will be typing out and I'll give them a copy of it after tonight's meeting.
So is this considered expulsion?
If it's a first semester, it would be considered an expulsion through the end of the first semester.
So item number three here is the student is expelled from the district until?
End of the first semester.
So, so the next item on here says during that time, the student may not be on school grounds or attend any school functions at the district without prior approval from the administrator. So if, whatever reason, you can't be here unless you've talked to either Mrs. Walmsley or Mrs. Merrill. Okay. Okay, so we have the student must complete, the next item is the student must complete the following restorative practices on or before the return. Is there anything we want to specify as a board?
An eval and cert proof?
Is that that part?
That would actually come in the next section.
Oh, that's the next one.
Stipulation. This would be if you want the letter to the student. I can't make the student, excuse me, a meat force of meat, but I can at least provide a vehicle to get the letter that's provided to the student.
So I would definitely put down, provide a letter of apology to the student involved, the other student. Under.
Well, I think restorative practice would.
That's the restorative practice case.
We would talk more about that when she comes back and being reinstated and now they will be encountering one another in the district. So then we would definitely have to have restorative practices that. I mean, I don't know, I mean, now, I don't know, maybe we shouldn't be communicating and maybe she's not ready to apologize. I don't think we should.
Maybe she can't.
I, I will say that.
Back through that and just do our restrictions. Okay, I'm good. Is everybody good with that? Okay, so then under our restrictions, number one is she will get a full mental health assessment, an evaluation by a licensed counselor. That's number one.
Yes, and they will also need to put in there that you are not a threat to yourself or to others. That kind of language will need to be written and given to us.
We may have a hard time getting that from anyone right now, but we could.
Well.
Well.
We, we, we don't need it until.
Well, I know, but. Mr. Walmsley, I've been dealing with another issue and it's getting harder to get psychologists to make those statements.
Oh.
Just letting you guys know.
I see what you're saying.
So we want to leave it in.
For legal purposes?
It's just getting harder to get it.
Well, we can still try.
We can try this then. Okay, we would also then require counseling during that time.
Didn't we already say that?
We are requiring.
They're doing the email now. They just sent the email. That's as far as we're going.
And we could use, we could do whatever they wish. We have care, which is something the district offers, or whatever your parents.
And then I don't know if you have to put down there, but like continuing education in some form.
Yeah, the next thing would be some form of education will need to be done or handled during that semester. I know typically in the past, we would work with you at least to help put in place or give some recommendations on what you could do.
Nice clarification in that.
Yes.
To the board, would a virtual option be available or would you leave a discretion with, if that's what the parents want, would be establishing that with the parents? So in other words, she could be still a technically Richmond student in the virtual platform.
Which we have done before.
If that's not an option, then they'd be looking for other options for education.
Is that even an option? Are, are we offering virtual this year?
We are offering it. Currently, we have nobody registered for virtual.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think that being that we are even being mean by only doing the one semester, I don't think virtual, I think virtual should be taken off the table. This might add being that it is a virtual threat, for lack of better terms. I don't know. That can be left to handle.
Are you saying any virtual?
Mean any virtual outside of us? The parents are taking care of their virtual, her virtual schooling and being responsible for it at home for the semester.
Okay, so you're just saying.
But to make us now be responsible for her virtual environment, I struggle with that a little.
Okay, okay. We're good with that. So they would need to seek out virtual outside of the district or any kind of schooling outside of the district.
Just out of curiosity, Superintendent, is that something you helped the parents set up, you know, virtual education or just giving some guidelines or some?
I provide a list of alternative schools.
Okay.
Many of them are virtual.
Okay.
As I said to the, the parents, this does it preclude her from registering in her own district or school of choice into other districts if they want an in-person option, just up to that district. But I will provide a list of, these are what are available in Comer County.
Okay, any other restrictions? Anything upon return?
Well, what is, what is the date? When does the second semester start? Because we've done where we've said you have to, your proof has to be in by a certain date so that it's a board, you know, we have a meeting for reinstatement.
And we only have one meeting in December.
Well, would January, it wouldn't be December, it would be February or sometime in June.
Is it the end of January this year?
Second semester ends January 19th. Second and fourth Monday, we have a board meeting on January 8th, assuming that the same board schedule that we have through our organization.
Right.
And making assumptions to January 8th.
And when are we back from the holiday break?
January 3rd.
That, I would, that's what I was saying. It's got to be due by January 3rd.
So that we could have set up a meeting.
You know.
To come back.
Administrators, all of that.
So everything, we would need a documentation of everything?
Okay, that would be by January 3rd.
Correct. So then that way we can set up a meeting because you would have to come back before the board.
I would just like to add then one of the stipulations be obviously not any, in any kind of.
Oh, any kind of trouble or issues.
I guess, for lack of a word.
Yeah. We can add that.
It's the third bullet that says, it says that the student is not engaged in conduct during the period of expulsion, then may be viewed, in this case by the board, as detrimental to the student's continuing education. Basically, that's the discipline aspect of it. So just to make sure I have this correctly, the restrictions or the reinstatement conditions, a full mental health evaluation provided by a licensed counselor demonstrates successful participation in an appropriate counseling program approved. I don't typically approve counseling as long as they're certified, that's, that's the standard.
We put the CARES program in there, which is, we provide.
Which is a free.
It's free, so.
I would provide that for a parent as a researcher, that would mean this counseling. Establish that the student is not engaged in conduct during the period of expulsion, that may be viewed as detrimental to the student's continuing education. The student has demonstrated the satisfactory, that the student has received educational instruction and cooperatively participated in the educational program. Those are the four that I have.
Good with that? Okay. So Abigail, do you understand what's, what's happening? Do you have any questions for us?
I have one more question. Abby, do you still have the interview? Uh, no, I don't know. Uh, before we, you know, something about.
Just so I'm clear, will she have to come back in front of the board before reinstatement assuming that we get all the documents sent by January 3rd? Will there be another hearing, her reinstatement at a later date or is she, is that just?
More likely it's going to be January 8th, the hearing, and then the schedule board and meeting after that. And in past practice, Ben, if the conditions have been met, it's satisfactory to the board, the student has been reinstated just as a past practice.
Okay. Okay.
It's more just a confirmation on what the board has asked for her to do.
It's likely that she'll have to redo it January 8th, whether or not the conditions have been met or not.
Yes, and I say that because we have not established the meeting schedule for 2024. But if we follow the same pattern we've done for the last several years, January 8th would be a board meeting. And that would be a published board meeting. And then you would ultimately have the choice in the hearing to do it in closed or open session.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, just to let you know, you are free to leave now. We're going to vote on it later in the meeting, but it's going to be exactly what we just said here. Okay?
The vote will actually be just approving the adopted resolution. I will type this up, get the board secretary to sign it, and then you will get a copy. I'll try to get it done tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time.
Good luck, Abigail.
Yes, good luck. We get to keep them, right?
Yeah, I don't want to. Oh, it doesn't matter. We always pass them in.
Next item on our agenda.
I feel like I really performed my.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act and upon the request of the student's parent and or guardian, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline or reinstatement of a student whose identity is known as student 110322-A.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to go meet in the 201. Okay, we're going to return into open session at 9:23. Our next item on our agenda, oh, thank you. Our next item on our agenda is our Academic Hall of Honor and Athletic Hall of Fame. This will be with Ms. Teltow and Mr. Trend.
I'm not hiding my list from the students. We're both here, we're excited to announce our Athletic Hall of Fame and Academic Hall of Honor inductees for inaugural classes. I'm actually, I gotta, I gotta give a lot of credit to our, from the athletic side, our committee. We met back in June. We had a collection of nominees that came in through our online form. We met as a group and I can say, Mr. Walmsley can vouch for it because he was on the committee and also Connor, that we feel we've got a great class of six. We were unanimous in selecting all six, so we're really excited about it.
And with respect to the Hall of Honor academics, the Richmond Education Foundation, our entire board took our nominees and chose, and we have three that we are going to conduct in October. And we are just as excited that I think this is just such a really cool thing. We appreciate the school district's support to be able to acknowledge those graduates or employees for all the work that they've done athletically for us, academically, so we're very excited. And we're going to, we're announcing who they are publicly and the weekend of homecoming if you want to speak to.
Yep. So our homecoming game is Friday, September 29th against North Branch. So Ms. Teltow and I, we're discussing it and kind of talking through how the logistics of the game will work because obviously the homecoming halftime is already packed. And I don't want to take anything away from the court or the band, so we're working with when we're going to recognize those individuals, but they will be recognized during a stoppage in the game. We'll recognize them at the game, they'll have the opportunity to be in the parade if they choose to. And then on Sunday, we'll have a small reception here at the auditorium and we'll have our formal induction ceremony at that time. So there's more information to come as we kind of hammer out the logistics of it, so.
Do you want to go first?
Sure. I am very excited to announce the three inductees into our inaugural Hall of Honor for academics. Our first is Amelia Miller, who is a member of the class of 2007, and she is the Promotion and Education Specialist at Michigan Farm Bureau. Second is Dr. Michael Mott, who is the graduate of the class of 1981. He is the Division Head of Orthopedic Oncology, Department of Orthopedic Surgery at Henry Ford Hospital Detroit. And our third is Virginia Wood. Mrs. Wood was a 50-year science teacher here at Richmond High School. She retired in 2007 and we are just thrilled for these three choices and more information about them will happen at the induction, but we have three great choices.
So for our class, we chose to induct across all four of our categories, athlete, coach, team, and contributor. So our first inductee will be John Buzz Schmidt, football player and baseball player here at Richmond, all-state athlete, played collegiately as well. Our next athlete is Sue Masseroni, now Sue Boyd, who was our first state champion in school history in track and field, also competed, and she still has the record for the shot put. And competed collegiately. Our first inductee as a coach is Coach George Hamlin, six-time state championship coach in wrestling. And in the discussion, we talked about, you know, how that program got built from where it was to where he left it in really good hands. Our teams that are being inducted, we have two. We have the 1958 football team, which would compile the record of 8-0. And back then, there were no playoffs, so that was kind of where their season ended, was an 8-0 season, so. And then our 1983 state championship volleyball team, first team state championship in school history. And I learned, I learned quite a bit through the process of this. I thought I knew a lot about Richmond athletics. I had no idea about this team, this football team and the successes they had. And then I went through some of their names, like, I know them. And then the volleyball team, talking to Coach Becky Stewart about when Title IX came through and a lot of the players on that were involved with some of the presentations in the Title IX there when it was passed. So, and our final category was the, we have it as the contributor category. And we chose the late Dick Foster for his contributions to softball and his general contributions to the Richmond Community School District. So we are very excited for our six nominees and now I get to finally tell them.
Thank you.
Just a quick note too, when you guys leave today, I left the board on by the gym. The graphics got put up last week, so if you'd like to check it out, the board is up and running. Doesn't have everything in it yet, there's a lot of data that's got to go in, but you can check that out on your way out.
Thank you both.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. Let's start off with, I don't know, who would, Mark?
I have a rave. It has to do with our Hall of Honor and our Hall of Fame, and I just wanted to acknowledge the academic part, the Richmond Education Foundation members, which are Julie Jagoda, Julie Kolosinski, Sandy Fortuna, Sue Boyd, Joe Schultz, and Kathy Miller, and our Superintendent Brian Walmsley, for the work that they did to get this to happen. It's very exciting, so I thank all of them for doing it. And for the athletic end of it, along with Mr. Trend and Mr. Walmsley, Connor Bergeron, our student board rep is, was part of that selection, Becky Stewart, George Hamlin, and Buzz Schmidt, so I thank those people that came aboard and helped us get this to start. It's just great.
Thank you, Candace.
You know, I just, whoever put together this morning's educational meeting for the staff, I wasn't able to attend unfortunately. I do like him, Jerry Brooks and Marika. It's hilarious, I'm sorry I missed it, but I have heard nothing but good things all day about it, so whoever put that on and got that all organized, thank you.
Ellen?
No, not today.
Dan Young?
Just to piggyback off of Candace, I went this morning to see Jerry Brooks and to hear the state of the district. I did like that piece of knowing all the readiness that we have and all the positives. And then Jerry Brooks was obviously great, but whoever put that all together, thank you.
It wasn't recorded at all, was it?
It was not, it was not recorded. I'm sure there's some on video or cell phones up there.
Sandy?
I also am just going to piggyback off a couple people. I wanted just to rave about Preston, really, actually, this was his, this whole Hall of Honor and whatnot was his, the Hall of Fame was his, he started that from the beginning and he brought it all to us and, you know, he really pretty much had most of it figured out for us, for the most part. So I thank you for that. I think that's awesome and it's going to be great for years to come, so thank you for that. And then also, I also attended this morning's Welcome Back to the Teachers and I really thought that us recognizing the teachers that have been here for five years or more was awesome and I hope that we continue that tradition. Whoever put all that together, I'm sure that came up with a lot of work or whatever, but it was well worth it, I think, and I think it was well received, so thank you for that.
Angel?
I'm all set, thank you.
I too want to repeat, the board members, I was there this morning. I've heard, all I've heard is really the staff loved where we athletic their years. They really felt that was a really positive piece. I felt it was a really good start to our school year. Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda, finally, right? We're going to have our Student Board of Education rep report.
Grab Margaret and push it on.
Oh, there it is.
Yes, starting off with the preschool and childcare. New childcare furniture has been all delivered and all the rooms look amazing. They have hired several childcare aides and are ready for the school year to start. The new indoor courtyard is ready for use. All equipment was installed over the weekend and they are very excited to utilize the amazing outdoor area. And then the preschool is fully staffed and ready for the upcoming school year. The elementary school, high school students decorated all the windows in the school for Blue Devil Days, which happened tomorrow. The annual chocolate fundraiser will kick off at the end of September, so a lot of little kids will be running around trying to sell chocolate, which everyone buy every year. And then the new staff are very welcome to the community and cannot wait for the upcoming school year to begin. In the middle school, teachers have PD today to prepare for Blue Devil Days and the upcoming school year, and all the new staff is very excited and eager to start the new school year. For middle school athletics, all the schools have started practice, all the teams have started practices. The seventh and eighth grade volleyball will have their home opener September 6th. September 7th, middle school football will be in Algonack. September 11th, seventh and eighth grade volleyball will be at home versus North Branch. September 12th, middle school cross-country opens at Lamont. And September 14th, football will be at Yale and seventh, eighth grade volleyball will be at Algonack. And for high school sports, varsity football, one of their season opener against St. Clair 24 to 6. And we will play this Thursday at Carroswell. Volleyball, it was 6-3 to start their season and they had a very notable 3-0 day at their home quad last week. Soccer is 0-2 and 1 to start. They battled back to tie at Yale last week and they lost a heartbreaker to North Branch this afternoon. Girls golf took fourth at their home B-WAC invite last week and they just took third at Yale today. And then on September 8th, the football team has their home opener against Algonack and they will honor Coach Glenn News and the 2003 football team, who were regional champions and had a 12-1 season, which is the best season that Richmond football has ever had.
Anyone have any questions for them? Okay, Mr. Walmsley, we're going to have our superintendent legislative update.
Just piggybacking on what Connor said, if you have a chance, please take a minute to go look at the preschool courtyard, that outdoor classroom is really cool. It is really cool. They were putting in the musical stations, the water stations, all of it. That whole courtyard is completely transformed from what it used to be, so. And the beauty of it is, it is available to our community after hours too to use it and so forth. As has been mentioned, there, let me start with the bond. We are finishing the summer projects. There's a couple items that they have to still finish, like on Wednesday morning, they'll be putting the bollards in for by the middle school playground so no vehicles can go onto the, the safety mechanism we're putting in place, go onto the playground. We have volumes going around our generators, that was a request of our insurance company. And there's just some punches items they're doing, but at this point, we will now start finalizing the costs and then at some point in September, Tammy and I will be bringing back to you, here's where we spent, here's where we didn't spend dollars. Just a reminder to the parents out there, look at the newsletter that you received in your household and on July, in July, it is on the website. I'm sure it's going to be talked about in the principal's newsletters or email communication. There is a one-way traffic pattern now in the elementary school. You come in by the varsity, junior varsity baseball and you can only exit out the other exit, so there's striping done, there is signage. We put it in the newsletter. We'll be emitting, hopefully, fingers crossed. The middle school, the exit that used to come out right before the traffic circle, you see there's cones there, we have created a one-way drop-off pattern in the middle school. So again, that's hoping to alleviate congestion in front and kids getting out of their cars in front of the middle school, which is not safe. It's a hope that, just please pack your patience. The first couple days, a lot of parents are driving more than usual, so just please pack your patience. As was discussed, today was our Welcome Back. We did a state of the district, represented the state of the district in excellent shape. I didn't focus on any test scores, but focused on the other values that really look at measuring a district from curriculum, instruction, HR, human resources, transportation, business finance, et cetera. After that, Jared Brooks was our keynote speaker, well received by the staff. And I think his message was truly what we needed as an organization because it's all about being on the same page as an organization. I would like to give a couple thank yous. This did not go off with a lot of, without a lot of help. The state of, the district slideshow was contributed by Mrs. Staples for the curriculum, Mr. Thiel for the HR slides, Mrs. Shad for the business slide, Mrs. Fulgram for the transportation, Mrs. Guinea for food service, Mr. Lamont for the IT slides, Mr. Trend for the safety and athletics slides. I want to thank the principals, Ms. Manguni, Mr. Gibson, Ms. Morrell, Mr. Durnight, Ms. Zabel, Ms. Borwick, Mr. Trend and Mrs. Amy, the special director, for their assistance in getting staff where they needed to be and distributing this morning. Sound and lighting during the presentation, as well as the music playlist before. Ian O'Neil, one of our IT people, put that together. He was very excited this weekend to share it with me and so I thought it was really nice to touch. Mr. Lamont, Mr. O'Neil, Mrs. Rans for courting all the technologies for our afternoon presenters. They made sure everything worked. I received tonight a link from John Marion from Marion Studios, who's there taking photographs, so we'll be getting those up on our website. Obviously, Mr. Brooks for the great presentation for our staff, the message was spot on. Jennifer Starland, a Richmond alumni, an attorney through Shroom Law, was here this afternoon, providing legal updates for all of our staff. Mr. Trend, I thank you for the crisis management, making sure our staff was prepared this year, this afternoon. All the building administrative teams for what they did in the afternoon. All the building administrative teams for what they did in the afternoon activities. Mrs. Shad for coordinating with the Village Cafe for the continental breakfast this morning. All of our custodian staff, there was a lot of efforts put into coordinating, getting the buildings ready and running today's event. Abovable fees, providing boxed lunches for all of our staff because time was tight and so when they left the auditorium, we provided boxed lunches for them to go when they headed to the building base. I thank the board for your support and those I know some schedules we weren't able to attend, but thank you for being there. Mars Olden for her assistance and support, helping just coordinating and printing certificates. Cynthia Fields, my secretary, she pulled off a lot of logistics and stuff, so this truly was a team effort and though I'd love to take credit for it, I really can't because without these people, it would not have gone off like it did today. I have heard a lot of positives from staff and energizing, like one of the comments when they had lunch today, we saw staff members who don't typically eat with each other, just socializing, whether it was food service and teachers or bus driver and secretaries who never get a chance to really see each other and it was an opportunity for them to kinda build some camaraderie. Tomorrow, Food Service Department, Transportation Department have their departmental Welcome Back meetings in the morning. Wednesday is Custodians where they'll focus more on departmental issues. Blue Devil Days is tomorrow night from 5 to 8. It is also our community open house, just a reminder, anybody in the community is welcome to come to any of our buildings. I'll send the information from the board, but basically it's, it's an opportunity to see what four years of bond construction has done and a thank you to the community for what they supported in November of 2019. It seems so far, far away, but it's busy. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. By the way, it has food tomorrow night, right?
Yes. There's a free meal for anybody who comes at all three of our cafeterias. There's hot dogs, chips, drink and cookie.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is our items of interest from the board. I'm gonna go alphabetical, Candace, do you have any items?
Just a couple things. So I know that we have approved for the free lunch programs for all the students now for this year. I just, can you explain a little bit more about how, what goes into that menu then? Would the menu change at all, you know, based on the financials that are provided versus what we would pay?
There is no change in the menu. We still are required and obligated to follow the nutritional guidelines set by the federal government in the, in the US Department of Education and then our state department. So we still have to follow so many saturated fats, so many carbs, et cetera, through the week. So we are introducing other options, like in October, we're bringing back the homemade soups again, which we started several years ago, trying to introduce more other options that are still meet the requirements from the school's perspective. As far as free, yes, everybody receives a free breakfast and lunch. If student, parents, we are still obligated to collect free reduced lunch applications. That will be a challenge, it's gonna be, as I hit the top of the last board meeting, we've got an incentive that we're gonna be launching in the schools to get those turned in, and the school that has the largest percentage of free reduced lunch applications turned in wins a prize. One of the things with that is that's the way our grant funding is determined, so if we don't get those applications in, it's gonna have a negative effect on the amount of funds we receive through grant funding, so.
But essentially, the menu is still in our hands.
The menu is still in our hands, the only thing we are required to do is meet the nutritional guidelines that, I believe it's, at the end of the week, we've gotta meet so many nutritional factors, but we determine what the menu is.
Can I ask you a question on that? I'm sorry, but does that, of course it just spaced, I just lost it, but yeah, sorry, go ahead. I'll call you, I could chat at different times.
Oh, yes, no, I'm sorry. So yes, so currently, right now, it is advised, if I as a parent that doesn't normally file for free and reduced lunch, should I do that this year? If I'm gonna still be taking advantage of the free and reduced lunch?
Yes, we're, our recommendation is everybody file it. You may, we have, we have a couple things, we have some families that, based on their income, they know they're not gonna qualify, so they're not gonna file it. We have some families who, they don't want people to know what their income, so they don't file it. Oftentimes, that group of families does qualify and that will be our challenges because even though you're getting a free reduced lunch, if we don't get the applications, it's gonna affect our grants for next year, they will be reduced.
So if I'm a parent that wouldn't qualify, you still need that application from me and that would depend, that would like, this help with the grant?
Yeah. If you think about the, we want everybody to apply because we'll process it, but our grants are determined based on the number of eligible free reduced lunch student who's eligible.
So you could be eligible, but you don't realize that?
You may not know, so might as well try it, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Candace, we kinda interrupted there.
No, that's okay.
Do you have anything else?
Um, I, no, I mean, we're gonna get to the dress code policy.
Yeah.
Um, not just yet.
Sandy?
Um, no, I think I, I think I'm good.
Ellen?
Nope.
Angel?
Yes, actually, I would like to, I'm just gonna throw out there, I guess as a board, I'd like for us to discuss about something I was able to with some few other board members over the last two weeks. Go to two meetings, one meeting emphasized on parental rights within the education system and another meeting focused on curriculum and books within education. And I was just hoping that maybe we as a board could discuss about maybe having an open question and answer forum to maybe have for our community on those three topics and a later date. And I, just something maybe we could get committee together or something for us to maybe talk about, hopefully having that. I was able to attend both of them, they're extremely informational and I think it would be something really great to bring to our community. I just wanted to share. Thank you.
I'd like to second Angela on that as well.
Danielle?
I'm good.
Margaret?
I'm good too. And I'm also good.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, I received one email from a parent on their student's attendance from last year in our truancy policy. This email was forwarded on to Mr. Womsley to address. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name, you will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Uh-oh, we have one up there.
Sign sheet?
Oh, there was a sign sheet up there.
Maybe they had to turn it around.
Your battery's dead.
Okay, here we go, I gotta watch.
Does it just stop?
Just turn on my phone. Do, I'm gonna do the do I on my watch?
Please.
Okay, school's doing it. I got it. Okay. I will check.
So it starts with J. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Christina Riley, I go by, I made a name, Lala@RMS. Today at the whole district, we had the pleasure of listening to a guest speaker, Mr. Gary Brooks. A couple of things he talked to us about were accountability and communication. There has always been a battle with both parents and students in regards to the dress code. Everyone has a different opinion and is allowed to have their own opinion. At the last board meeting, the dress code changes were a hot topic. The dress code should not allow hats or hoods, this is a safety issue. We need to be able to identify students easily in person and on camera. If a student doesn't feel good and wants to head up, then they shouldn't be in school. The dress code should not be a free-for-all. The language of no exposed private areas, I might be wrong on the exact language there, will be an issue. Swimsuits do not show private areas, sports bras or bras do not show private areas. Are we allowing these items to be worn at school? I know some of you will say, students will not wear those items or take it to that extreme, but I promise you, they will. If you've ever worked with children, any age, you know you give them an inch, they take a mile. I understand and agree that the dress code needs to be updated, but this is not the way or the language that should be used. I am a teacher and I am a teacher that, students know, I will dress code them. I will get hate from this speech, I will be talked about on social media from both parents and students. Every job has a dress code, I have a dress code. Doctors, garbage men, police officers, accountants, construction workers, grocery store employees, all careers have a dress code. As a teacher, I do not support the dress code that was presented at the last board meeting, neither do teachers that I talk to today, nor did they know about the possible changes in dress code. Pajama pants are not appropriate to wear to school. It's not about exposing too much skin, it's about breaking the rules. Students need to be accountable for their appearance. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. We want students to be successful, that is and always will be my goal for my students. I do not believe we're setting students up for success with this new dress code. I apologize to my, excuse me, I apologize to my administration, to my superintendent and to my board for bringing these issues to their attention so late. And I hope that we teachers and staff have the opportunity to provide input at the end of the year if these changes are adopted. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any other public comments? Okay, next item on our agenda, we're into our action items. The first one is approval of our 2023-24 Student Parent Code of Conduct. Mr. Womsley?
At the last board meeting, there was presented recommendations for changes in the conduct. At the meeting, there were some concerns regarding specific areas, dress code being one of them, that section. Talking with some board members after that, that meeting, as far as they contacted me afterwards about their concerns, I know I've heard other board members talking to other, individually other board members with some concerns. The recommendation before you is to keep the existing dress code language as it was in 2020, 22, 23 school year, and then we will bring back clarifying dress code language with the recommendation. There is a couple other changes that was talked about at the board meeting that were now clarified and they're highlighted in turquoise. One of them was a sentence that allows the superintendent designated to waive the reduced fees based on a student family's hardship, that was in regard to graduation. I hope that captured the essence of what the board was looking for.
Perfect, thank you.
On page 23, there's a statement defining what credit recovery is, we all kinda assumed it was, there was no definition. Page 44 and 45, that's what I referenced, keeping the existing dress code language and coming back for further. On page 47, there was the word inappropriate hallway behavior. We took off, I recommend taking out the hallway, I think it was one of the concerns was issuing inappropriate bathroom behaviors, et cetera. I believe if you just changed it to inappropriate behavior, you would be able to capture inappropriate behavior anywhere in the district. Page 68, there was a word that was should be, was will and was changed in May, and on page 68 also defines what excessive tardies are, as being basically what we use for excessive absences, 10% of the number of days in a card marking or semester or year.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion.
Can we, can I ask a question before we do a motion? Can we do it during discussion? I guess can, but my question, I'd like to have my question answered before we make a motion. I don't know, you tell me what is appropriate.
Go for it. What's your question?
It's a question regarding what I just talked about, that I think that would be inappropriate because these are changes after the last presentation.
My question is that we are going to approve the handbook with the code of conduct the way it was last year, when the discussion at the last meeting, and I know that Candace had some issues and Angela maybe voiced something, but to pull something out and say we're going to just keep it the way it was, that should be a discussion at this board table before, before changing. There should be a discussion that talks about if people had problems with that part of the, of the code of conduct, but not to arbitrarily just pull it out, we're not gonna do it because some people called the superintendent. That's not very transparent and I don't think that it's what we want to start doing. I think we had a presentation given to us by our administrators and this is what they came up with, what they wanted to do. And if we have personal feelings, things personally we don't like about it, that sort of thing, that conversation needs to happen at the table. And I, you already know, I told you this already, that I was gonna say this and I told Mr. Womsley, but I think by putting this in front of us with keeping the dress code the way it was, that wasn't what was presented to us and I don't think it's correct.
I just wanna address a rebuttal to your comment. I was not present at that meeting and I feel that I did my due diligence by afterwards viewing the meeting, looking at all the paperwork, talking to my VP because she was present at the meeting, and then having a discussion with Mr. Womsley to express my concerns with it. Because I was absent, I don't feel that my opinions should be ignored or not addressed or not handled or not taken into consideration.
I'm not saying that at all. I absolutely, I know you did your, I know that's what you did. What I'm saying to you is, we should be sitting here at this table, talking about approving what was presented to us, having the conversation. You weren't here, Danielle wasn't here. And I don't remember Kelly saying a whole lot of stuff, but if we're gonna make a decision, it's not if you're not here that you talk to the superintendent. We're supposed to, if we have questions, absolutely, we're supposed to do our work between the two weeks and you did that. And I'm not saying that you didn't. I'm saying that it's not being very transparent to the public on a decision that we're making by saying you talked to the superintendent, an email was sent, all of that, we should be deciding at the board table, discussing what everybody discusses. And if you get to the point that there are people that just, for whatever reason, can't support the people that run our buildings and want this to happen in their building, then you can discuss, is everybody good with approving the code of conduct minus the dress code? That's why we have the conversation. For one second here, please. I think that's kind of what's going on right now and for you to say that we wouldn't trust our administrators to go back and find language that we all agree with, I think that's what they're gonna be doing. That's why we're not currently gonna vote on any dress code, which I do think it would be nice for us to be able to sit here and debate this tonight, but in all actuality, it's for us to approve it, they are supposed to come up with the language and we are supposed to vote on the language.
But where did you decide as a board that the?
Because we're gonna vote on it, because we called our superintendent and our president let them know that we were not comfortable voting yes with the current student handbook, that's how it works, correct? So I think that our administrator is now trying to be proactive and say, you're right, there needs to be a bigger discussion on this.
Do our administrators know that we wanna have a bigger discussion?
Brian, our superintendent, I'm talking about our superintendent.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, I'm, I'm asking about our administrators in the buildings. And I'm not saying, everybody did, we did what we are supposed to need to do, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, the conversation, the exact same thing should be presented to us tonight that was here two weeks ago and we have the discussion. It is time to put a motion out that says that this is what we want to do.
But I don't think it can be done just tonight, I think there's too many inputs throughout this board. Now, we can sit here and debate, which I, you guys got through my email, I thought that's what should have been done, but with the current timeline and everything going on right now, I think that Superintendent Womsley felt would be best for us to come back to it at the next meeting in September so that him and his team could get language together that made the whole board feel comfortable voting yes on, or he might get no votes passing the student handbook.
It's time sensitive to have this conduct book.
Yeah, but we could make that, we could, and I'm not trying to speak for my.
And I'm not trying to speak for Margaret, but I think what she's saying is that we could have made that decision tonight at the table after discussing it. Because we don't even know how, we don't know how the vote would have been, two board members weren't even here. And I mean it in negative by that, I'm not saying you guys didn't do what you're supposed to do. You know what I mean? I'm just saying that I think what, I think is that we should have at least had the discussion then about it tonight. And then we could have decided to take that out.
Portion out.
That portion out tonight. We should have made that decision as a board tonight. Over it being made before a year.
Because I look at the email, I'd like to have more of the discussion because you didn't say a whole lot last time. And I know that sometimes we think we get, you know, okay, we have these questions. But our job is to sit here at the table and discuss what was presented to us, not to come back and have the superintendent or the board president decipher.
Well, I think some of us were willing to come back and discuss it. I just think it wasn't ideal because of the timeline of when we needed to get our student handbook out this year. Because tomorrow, they're going home on Blue Devil Day. So I think that it wasn't necessarily like anything done for any other reason other than the fact that time. We have to hand these out and have them signed tomorrow. People are coming back. So to now be able to debate, like there would have to be a whole nother document created and everything tomorrow and seminary.
How do we know that for sure if we don't do our job at the board table? That's all I'm trying to say. Because you could, the reality is you could come here and the discussion could be, you know what, that dress code doesn't work for the majority of the board. So the motion is to approve this with the keeping the dress code the way it is. That's all I'm trying to say.
Her point is, Brian and I should not have pulled it.
Yes. I'm just saying, we should be able to discuss it as a board. And in the conversation I had with them and was, if we're, the administrators, they are running the building, it's their building. This is, this is what they are looking to do. How do, how do I not support that? Because personally, if I think that, you know, this kind of bothers me on a personal level or whatever, but in the grand scheme of things, are we hurting students? No. We just had a discipline hearing, and the conversation was talking about supporting the administrators on whether they were going to get rid of, not get rid of, expel a student for an entire school year or for a semester. And we say we want to support the administrative, that was the discussion for the discipline here. But this is different.
It is different.
It is.
It is very different because it affects the teachers and the students and the parents in addition to the administrators.
Okay.
It is not just an administration issue. And when it comes down to it, it shouldn't be left solely in the administration's hands. So now, the clarification needs to be said of, now I'm a teacher, and I know that this person's clothing, for whatever reason, is distracting my class, so I send them to the office, and my administrator sends them back. Okay, do we send them home immediately? What happens? What are the, there's no measurables or identifiables within the policy or in the code. How can we, how can we make that burden on our teachers to be able to enforce that? And there's nothing there.
That's not what Margaret's saying.
No, she's full on, I'm saying that I don't think it's solely on the administration. And by me saying that I don't necessarily agree with this language is not saying that I'm not supporting my administrators.
No, 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 I'm not.
That's what you just said.
No, but no, I'm saying that if that's, if that's the, if that's what we talked about, we come to, that we don't want to support that, whatever, we have every right to do that.
Okay, so are we talking about it now or what's going on then? Are we debating now or are we going to continue with what the two of them said? Or are we debating?
Well, that's --
Because I thought we were debating now, but I guess we're not.
I just quite simply wanted to make my point that I thought how this was handled was wrong. I don't think we were being transparent.
Okay, so what do we do from here? We got that.
We continue.
Does somebody make a motion?
Somebody make a motion.
To do the way it is, and there you go.
The way it is.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2023-24 Student Parent Code of Conduct Handbook amended from the presentation on the August 14th, 2023, as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, my discussion is, so you're going to keep the dress code the way it is, but in two weeks, you're going to come back with the new big plan for the code of conduct, and that meets everybody's.
And have a discussion about it with new language. I think that's what we set.
But in two weeks.
In September, we're going to come back.
In two weeks, you're going to come back with new language for something that they put together, however long it took. So in two weeks, with the --
With the feedback from the board members that superintendent has received, they should be able to go back and --
I would like to know what all the feedback was from the board members.
I'd like to have the teachers involved. You've heard mine from the last meeting.
I'm not talking, I'm not saying.
And you've heard mine currently now, and you've heard Candace's from the last meeting.
You've heard mine.
And you've heard hers over the phone.
I have not, I have not heard that.
Yeah.
I have, I'm, Margaret, I don't understand why we can't talk about it, like what this had.
I'm, I'm, I told you guys, I know through my email, I was totally down with talking about it tonight.
I understand that, I know you are. What I'm saying though is, when, so when we, when we then now have to, when they come back to us with a new plan, and this one was actually never discussed amongst the board. I mean, it was at the last meeting, but then everything changed.
Well, I don't think we just approved the next plan, we yet again discussed it again before we approved it.
Yeah, but it's going to be a whole new plan.
So what's the difference?
I don't know.
What's the difference? I don't like it. Take it back. Give me a whole nother new plan. That's what the job is.
That's what you said, and that's what I guess other board members said, but I don't know what they said. I only know what you said because you said that you cited your --
Okay, but it doesn't matter if I as a board member, and you don't understand that I had this private conversation with my president and my superintendent, it doesn't matter, you don't need to know. I just don't like the current language.
I understand that, but I feel like everybody else should know.
Sure, but you don't have to. I mean, I guess if you think that, I'm sure, but there's no like, there's no protocol for that. I mean, you don't think --
So we don't, well, I think that if something was said at a school board meeting that I didn't like and I disagreed, and I called my president or my superintendent about it, and they decided to take action and get some more answers and maybe start working on something because enough board members made it, that was something of concern to them. I don't understand where you two are saying that by now going back to the drawing board is not the right way to go. When they went to the drawing board and we didn't --
There was only two board members that made, that made --
Three with them now, and Danielle was here, and Kelly just supported my motion, so.
I'm just, there was only two at the last meeting when we were supposed to have a conversation.
Okay, but wait, wait a minute, please. What should, what happens though, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, we have that meeting, and I agree with the comment Margaret said about, you know, sometimes we think of things afterwards or questions that we have afterwards. And I believe the process is, I go to my superintendent, and I make a meeting with my superintendent, and we sit down and we discuss my questions, okay? And I know that there are other people on this board that did that during that week. Now, the piece that I, I believe should happen is we come back, we put the motion out, and we'll give or take if we did the motion right or not. We discuss it now, don't we? But we're, but we're not discussing it now because you took off and you, you, you put in there that we're going to have the code, the dress code the way it was. I'm, I'm going to stop because you, no one agrees with me. I think how we, I think we did it wrong, and we talk about, I listen to the whole transparency stuff all the time. I don't think this was being transparent. And we have every right to do our job. You're right, you called the superintendent.
I think this was the most transparent thing we've done as a board in a long time. Everybody here, parents and teachers, know that we have totally gotten rid of our dress code. It has been uprooted, there's no language in there at all. There's pretty much no dress code. Now, we're not doing that because hopefully we're going to pass this vote now, that we're going to go back to brainstorming in September, because I do agree, it needs to be updated for sure, and we should be together. And I don't know if we as board members should be debating about it, or do we send our team back to bring the language? And then we debate about that language, and then we approve it. So I think the next step is exactly how Deb said, President McConaughey said, but that's what I'm saying.
I'd like to throw another little thing on that. I really like how you changed the inappropriate hallway behavior to just inappropriate behavior. But I would like to see, and I know you all know this because I emailed it, I really would like to see a, some sort of a code of conduct for the lack of room behavior.
Specific?
Specific now that policies have been made in other areas and things. I know it's not in anything, and I did see there is a locker room behavior for the athletic. Maybe we could just carry that verbiage over into ours. Not, it's not necessarily reinventing the wheel, it's just adding to it.
Do we have any other comments from the board or any other discussion?
So unless the board wants me to go in a different direction, the plan was to take what was proposed language, bring it back to the board with clarifications and for detail, if you will. I have to sit with my team and go over that. If the board wants something else, a whole new plan, then I need to know that.
What plan are you talking, are you talking about the locker room plan? Are you talking about the dress code?
I'm talking about taking the existing, the dress code language that was proposed that under here is taken out, and going back to my team and looking at that dress code and adding comments that were made at the August 14th meeting, trying to take into consideration to create something that is palatable for everybody here.
I would like to see the teachers have put in a plan, at least with our administrative staff.
I would just like to not have, not for it to be our teachers' administrative job to police the clothing that these children are wearing. I think that's on the parents. No, my kids certainly weren't allowed to wear certain things.
Yeah, but as a teacher teaching, what if this child is constantly distraction in my classroom? How do I stop that? What if they keep throwing their hat up in the air over and over, and it falls, and he grabs it and falls and, like, don't wear the hat anymore. They keep throwing the hat every day and keeps doing it, like, when does that stop? Or what if it is the girl that keeps bending over on purpose in the front of the classroom?
She, like, we can't show her private parts, so.
I, but she's not, all I'm seeing is her underwear and her butt cheeks. Is that private parts? What is your idea of private parts? It may not be the same as my idea as private parts. I don't think girls should be showing their butt cheeks in school. Well, some may disagree with that. Some may think it's not okay to show your midriff. Some people may think it is okay. So I think that we as a whole district --
But why is that our job? We can discuss what we're concerned about.
It's not our job, but it becomes a distraction to a teacher.
I just feel like that should be up to the parents. I don't want to police other children, that's all I'm saying.
But if my class, if I cannot teach in my classroom because of these things, it says right in here, there to reduce, the dress code was designed to reduce distraction within the classroom. So if I as a teacher have students dressed that is being distracting, just like sunglasses, wearing sunglasses the whole time during class, and I don't know if they're paying attention to me or sleeping, like, I need to know as a teacher, why are you failing? Are you failing because you're sleeping through my class? You can't wear sunglasses the whole time. Do you know what I'm saying? There needs to be some parameters there and some teeth in the code so that teachers can like do something with, if they need to. And I also like could use the help as a parent, so my daughter's not coming in dressed a certain way in middle school. If there's parameters --
So you want the school to police your children?
Sure, maybe if I'm working parents and all of a sudden, you know, my daughter goes out and something that's inappropriate that is a distraction to other students and maybe makes her not look so well, that's their job. It's their job.
What do you mean by her not look so well?
Like, you know, I don't know, showing private parts that would make her maybe, you know, not be appropriate as a little girl.
But that's in the legislation.
But there, I did, so you're telling me my daughter can walk into school in a bra top and a pair of boy shorts in fourth grade, and that's appropriate school attire?
That's not what I'm saying.
But that's what, but that's how this is read. That's how that could be read, that's how our board would have tested.
It's not, it's, it's not. It's what it's saying is like I --
No private parts, that's it.
Yeah, and it's up to the parents. You parent your children, and I'll parent mine.
Okay.
Well, this is what's going to be when it comes back in September, so everybody needs to be prepared.
But that, and that's the appropriate time, yes, that's, that's the appropriate time to have this conversation.
Well, let's try to remember one at a time and distract each other like we heard today at the, our speaker. Okay, any other discussion?
I'm just going to say, since Sandy says that she doesn't know where I stand on this, I fully support everything that Ms. Wallace said in her three-minute speech. That's where I stand. I'm, it's not a discussion.
Well, they're not giving anything at the last minute, or at the last meeting when we were discussing.
I brought up the whole fact of the dress code initially, and then it spread around, and I just sat back and let it go.
Okay.
Okay. You go back and watch the meeting, that's the one that brought it up.
I didn't hear you say anything.
Well, I did. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote now? Anybody else have a comment, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of the 23-24 Student Athletic Code of Conduct Handbook. Mr. Walmsley.
Mr. Trent presented the athletic. There was no major changes, there was a couple grammatical corrections and so forth. So the recommendation is to approve the 23-24 Student Athletic Code of Conduct Handbook.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2023-2024 Student Athletic Code of Conduct Handbook as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of club sport powerlifting. Mr. Walmsley.
At the presentation at the last board meeting, there was a recommendation to begin powerlifting at high school level as a club sport. It would be my recommendation of the board to support that.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve powerlifting as a club sport at Richmond High School, beginning with the 2023-24 school year as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of board resolution for student 082823A regarding our reinstatement hearing.
I move that following an open session student discipline hearing. No. It's not the right one.
Yeah, it is.
That's the right one.
That's the right one.
Because we have two.
The other one is 11.
We have two.
But I think they're different.
We have two.
They are different.
They're different numbers, the one 082823A is the --
It was the one that was an open session.
I move that following an open session student discipline hearing, the board votes to expel student 082823-A consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion, I'm sorry. Nay. I know, I'm sorry, I just meant I missed it. I didn't mean I know, whatever, I just like, did I hear that? Thank you. Any dis, sorry, motion carries.
I don't have the other student number. 110322.
Oh, which one? I'm sorry, Margaret, what is it?
110322-A.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I move that following a closed student reinstatement hearing, the board votes to reinstate student 110322-A effective August 29th. Is that, is that, is that correct to say, August 29th?
I would say we --
August 29th, 2023, consistent with the attached resolution. Right, because we have a resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Being no further business, the board will adjourn at 10:21. Being no further business, the board will adjourn at 10:21.